I'd like to call committee meeting of the Elwood City Area School District, September 8th, 2014 to order. Two presidents report, Mr. Mancini.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Zelli. One of the things I'd like to do on Mondays is have the principals just give a kind of brief update. I'd like them to come to Monday meetings, just know what's going on with their schools. And so we'll just start with Mr. Lake here. It's the two-minute update on what's happened.
If you want to take one of these handouts, this is something that came to me over the last couple of weeks. I think it's something that we should definitely look into endeavor for the school and for the community. I put a brief overview on the front and then attached some items to it. I was notified back in August by Lisa Taylor. She's the co-founder of the American Fallen Soldiers Project. And her project would like to present Leslie Sabo's family with a portrait that has been done. I'm going to skip down to the bottom of my letter to you. And if you visit that website, americanfallensoldiers.com, you'll see some of the previous portraits that they've done. Her idea is to present it to the family on Veterans Day in our auditorium with some students present. My initial reaction was juniors and seniors should also like to invite communities so that would give us plenty of space. And we invited the community. And on top of it, there's a company, Auto Street Productions, that comes in videotapes every presentation. And they like to be here and then eventually air it on the Inspire Network. So I guess what I'm asking the board this week, if you can take a look at this maybe tonight, I'm sorry I didn't get it into the communicator for you for the weekend to look at, but maybe Thursday, if everything looks kosher and I gave a copy to the attorney to care of to take a look at, we can sign the agreement and I can go ahead and start proceeding with the final plans of the presentation and videotaping and so forth. I think it'd be something that would definitely be a positive for the high school and the Elwood City community. And I just gave that to you, so if there's any questions later, I'll be around if you want to ask any. Mr. Mancini, I watched the videos on the previous ones that they've supplied online, and they're pretty emotional videos. This record started school, I mean, I want to commend Steve and his crew. I think the high school, you know, we said this before, for 1925 building, it was pretty impressive as far as cleanliness and the way it was ready. So we appreciate that. It's been a great, great start. You know, just more plugging away like we normally do at this point. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lake.
Well, I'm going to dovetail right off what Mr. Lake said. First thing I've written down here is the school started with the building very clean. I'd like to commend Mr. Schuster and the staff. My only complaint was this morning when the sun came through and the glare off the floor was so bright they don't want to see. So it's a great complaint. It was down in Hartman, and it was awesome. So it looks really good. I know I appreciate it, the staff, the kids, we all appreciate it. So it looks great. So, Mr. Schuster, thank you. The kids made a great transition to the next grade. Very helpful that we did that one day last year. And kids came into confident, much more confident, I think, than they would otherwise. They recognized people's faces, they went to their rooms for the most part, and they really had a nice start to the year. I've heard many good reports regarding the school lunch, both from kids at school and kids at my house. They are very pleased with the way things are going at this point, so it's good to have smiles on both fronts, if you know what I mean. The Hartman News Program is often running. Mr. Flodico has transitioned from Perry to Hartman. He's now running the Hartman Morning News, and it is awesome. I am working on getting that on the TV station on a daily basis, having some formatting, compression, decompression issues, and I want to make it fullscreen. When I get that up and running, I'm going to send an automated phone call out to all the parents, grades three through six, so they can watch as well. It's really, it is a professional-looking, three-to-eight-minute announce, seven announce, which is really cool. So if you get a chance to do that, please, it's on the Armstrong Cable Channel, either 50 or 212. It is very impressive to see our kids doing what they do, and they do this every day. I'm planning a parent night at Perry, where parents can come and receive a homework helper package for attending. That's in the early stages, but it'll be a Title I event, and I'm getting shopping list together, and we're going to get rolling with that. Hoping to do that by the middle of next month. We will see where we go and how soon we can get things in, but I'll give you an update on that as it comes about. Asking you to follow me on Twitter, @Perry underscore Hartman. We try to get something out there as often as we can. When I see something good, I put it out there. Finally, some big news. I'm quite honored to be selected to be part of an American delegation of educators who are going to China. I applied through a application process through the College Board. In November, I will be flying out there, staying for seven or eight days, depending on the time, and I'll be connecting with American and Chinese educators to try to bring the culture back, to see if we can make some connections with some classrooms over there, and maybe even at least investigate the idea of a Chinese language program here in Elwood City. I think that would be a fantastic way to get rolling with this. That's all I have. Anybody have any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Gill.
Thank you.
Okay. First of all, I'd like to thank Mr. Garter for attending our open house. It was a really wonderful event. We had 404 parents at Northside, and we had 100% positive feedback. We've had 15 to 10 parent volunteers at Northside every day, helping with various activities such as helping open containers at lunchtime, helping with fencers, and all kinds of other special events. So we really just wanted to push out of the PTO for all their help. Our new RTI facilitator started today. She was already on our sub-list, and as you know, our RTI facilitator is on the memorandum of understanding, like a sub. She started today. She actually built her schedule and started seeing kids today. So I was very excited about that. She's special ed certified, and she'll be working with the lowest 5% of the students at each grade level at Northside. You may know that our person that we put in for the long-term maternity leave for Diane Fensel was hired at another district. So I put my RTI facilitator, who's a reading specialist and already approved, into that position. She came day one with behavior plans for several students and is doing a fabulous job. Couldn't be happier. Metz, I'm getting tons of positive parent feedback. We have parents in the cafeteria every day. They're seeing the kids are eating better, they're throwing away less. We have a new way of letting the cafeteria workers know what, which of the five selections the children are choosing for that day. So they're getting through the line much quicker, and they're having more time to eat the delicious, fresh food that Metz is providing for us. So a big thanks to Carl. As far as building and grounds, we had a little bit of peeling paint. Our little five-year-old fingers were peeling large sections of paint off the wall, and my custodians painted the whole area of concern the night before, the night of, or the night before open house. So all I have to do is ask, and they're right there, and they fixed it, and it looked beautiful, and no one knew that they peeled the paint. We had very few priors this year. Our kindergartners and first and second graders are adjusting very nicely. We have ICAN statements that represent our Common Core. They're being posted daily, and I'm looking for those during my walkthroughs. Our AmeriCorps service member is in her second year with us. She's a certified teacher, and she's going to do an after-school book club at Northside. We had, I had the opportunity to order 125 radon kits for all of our second-grade students to learn about during science class and then take home, and I hope to make sure that we have healthy homes for those second-grade students. So it's, we're going to build it into the science curriculum, and when we get to, they will save until we get to gases and other things related to the radon kits, and then those will go home. And we also, tomorrow, we have ABC, Channel 33, WYTV news coming in to record five of our classrooms saying the pledge of allegiance. So we'd like to show our patriotism, and that's all I have for you today. Any questions for me? Okay, thank you.
Leslie, special ed stuff.
Okay. With regard to special ed, Mrs. Hall and I have been working on the special ed performance plan to school to community-based competitive employment, and that is a $41,000 grant that we collaboratively worked with Laurel School District. It is specifically looking at graduation dropout prevention, as well as school-to-work employment for our students, for seniors who are graduating. That grant is due by Friday. And not only did we work with Laurel, so we would look at splitting that grant with them if we were able to get it. Only six are being offered throughout the state. But we also went in with the MIU four as a consortium with multiple Mercer and Lawrence County School Districts. So we've been working on that in order to help our students. Met with Sharon Regional Health System today to look at possibly opening a compass program, which is school-based mental health program, to look at if that would be beneficial for our students and how to progress with that within our buildings. I am working with the three other trainers for CPI training, which is restraint training. We will be developing that program to offer to our staff on our Act 80 day, as well as another day. It is an eight-hour training that we will have to deliver, and we have to have 18 hours of training a year. So those are probably the biggest three that I want in special education right now above and beyond our IUP meetings, and that's it.
Thank you. We'll go over to revenue and finance.
Okay, we have our regular monthly reports. For August, we presented on Thursday evening. Now, we've been looking at procurement card program. We have one credit card in a district that we use. We keep it locked in the safe. But we're looking at trying to get through PF Ann or Pliggett, a company we work with, a series of five or six cards. And what the five or six cards will do is enable us to cut down on the number of paper purchase orders that we're cutting, the checks that we're using to pay for those costs. And it'll give Steve and his guys really more flexibility to run the TNL, to run the Trader Horn, to run wherever with a card as opposed to a piece of paper and a purchase order. So we're looking at five cards. What that'll enable us to do also is to get $100,000 worth of employee abuse-type insurance. I doubt anything like that would happen, but it does provide the coverage for those cards. We also envision giving these to a foods teacher, for example. They go to John Eagle, purchase supplies for the classroom, and it gets to be kind of a hassle having to get a credit card out of the safe. Credit cards would come with their name on it, the tax exempt number on it, and it would be limited. So, for example, the food department budget may be 750 bucks. That's what goes on the card. You can limit it to purchase on the food. So there'll be lots of controls on these cards, and I guess, don't guess, I know there's a rebate program that comes with them. So if we spend enough money, Pliggett cuts us a check back. And what we talked about doing is putting that money toward
Technology.
Technology.
Earmarking it. I'd like to get the rebate, when they give the rebate, use it specifically for technology or something for students, instead of just putting it in general fund, like earmark the rebate to buy Chromebooks or, you know, classroom set, you know, however we can do that.
I don't envision the card, the cards being used a lot upfront. What I envision is trying to see what vendors will accept credit cards. And first of all I have, for example, is we're talking about a book adoption next year. So if you get into a couple hundred thousand dollars of books, I'm going to use a card like that, and the rebates will add up. And the way this would work is we would actually put our investment money with Pliggett. They would take the money directly out of the Pliggett account. So we're not even cutting a check. The Pliggett will pay the bill. It goes into our accounting system, so we're still keeping track. We're running P-card checks is what we would do, and we can also reconcile against the Pliggett records as well. Again, I envision moving very slowly with it until we really get the handle on how we can use it best, trying to investigate the vendors that will accept it. There'll be a resolution the board may want to consider on Thursday night, if you'd like them to forward with it. And that's really it under revenue and finance.
I have a question.
Sure.
Would you be controlling this?
I would be.
When the receipts come in, do you have detail?
Yeah.
Because when you're getting a purchase order, you're seeing it firsthand.
You're seeing the actual material?
Well, you're getting usually a breakdown of what it is when you're looking at a receipt.
Well, the receipts would come in. I don't envision this being large items. I envision this being not in a vault, a rusher, and that kind of thing. And what happens now is if those receipts come in to Steve, he looks at them, he approves them, and then they go to accounts payable for payment. That same thing would still basically happen, except now, instead of having to write 10 checks in small amounts to 10 various vendors, it would even be one check. It would be Pliggett drawing the money out of our investment. So you'd still have receipts for our purchase, because, I mean, the auditors would come in and book the receipt, so we wouldn't be going away from receipts.
Wouldn't the person that's, has the card, the procurement card, wouldn't have to reconcile at the end of the month?
Yes, they do. They have to go through a reconciled process. And what I'll be bringing you over the next couple of meetings, I have a sample policy that I'll hand out that's put together basically by PSBA. There's a user card agreement. What I want to do is get the resolution in place first, and then get all the applications and paperwork put together, get that to Pliggett. Once we get it all set up, come back, get the users approved, the amounts the users are going to be authorized to use approved, and kind of the process and the procedures. And if the board's not interested in moving forward with it, then there's no sense going through all that. But we've been looking at this for quite a while, and Mr. Mancini went to a meeting and he said, hey, they were handing out checks at this meeting, and I didn't get one. So that kind of prompted us to look a little bit harder and move to him.
What is the rebate? Is it like a percent off?
It's very smart. I've got the numbers I can share. It's like 0.55%. And it's a sliding scale, so the more you spend, the more money you get back.
Personnel will be executive session. Properties and transportation. Rich, you want to take this first one?
Yeah, we have parent transportation contracts. Parents drive their kids to various non-public schools, and we usually contract with them for the IRS reimbursement rate. There are occasions where we happen to go see a different rate based on the needs of the parent, but at this point, most of our, if not most, all of our contracts are basically IRS reimbursement rate. So we'll be submitting contracts for approval Thursday evening. In October, we'll submit what we're doing with Elwood City Transit, once we have an opportunity to have all the routes settled down, and all the buses and bus stops put all together. Now, moving on to number two, we are part of the Pennsylvania Diesel Fuel Consortium. We do lock-in prices from September 1 through June 30. And you can see that the price went up three cents per gallon for diesel fuel and 13 cents per gallon for unleaded gasoline. So I'll submit that pricing to the board for consideration Thursday evening. We have committed to the consortium, so we really do have to kind of act on it, but I think still we're doing well, considering the number of gallons that we're going out to bid for. And then last but not least, under properties and transportation, we've been looking at uniform and mock vendors. We're still going through that process. The contract doesn't expire until October, but if we can get the final pricing that we need for Thursday night, we'll submit a proposal for your consideration.
Assistant Affairs, we have a nurse practicum student through Eastern Mennonite University who's requested to do basically like our student teaching for nursing, nurse practicum, January through April 2015. We've got several nurses that have said, yeah, they would take her on and get her hours. So informational.
The general obligation, though, you feel aware, they'll be, are borrowing $100,000 to put our telephone system in. There are a lot of documents, a lot more than I thought there were going to be with this process. I've been working with Solicitor General Carroll, bond counsel, and the bank to get all those documents put together. Again, the board has already approved a sample document, a resolution, and a proposal contingent upon all those people approved the documents. So I don't have to bring those back to the board again, but I just wanted to make you aware that on the 60th of September, we'll be closing, and we'll be getting the $100,000 payment. We should have the phone installed, I'm thinking, in the next couple of weeks. Submitted a lot of information to the telephone company. They'll be, they've been in the district a couple of different days doing some wiring. They'll be back, I believe, this week to do some additional things, actually, I think, to bring the phones in, and then we'll be able to cut over and go live. And then last but not least, under informational, and you can kind of read that for yourself, we have a situation where a house was transferred from a mother to her three daughters, and as a result of that transfer, the county assessor took the homestead farmstead exclusion away, because he's unaware of who that property is being transferred to. In this particular case, it's a life estate, which means that the parent transfers the property to the children. She remains in the home, pays the taxes, has the right to live there, so in fact, she should have had the homestead farmstead exclusion. But we've been down this road before, where the county takes an action, and then they come back to the district looking for a refund or a solution. In May, assessor's office certifies the amount of money that we have to divvy up. We divvy it up through the homestead farmstead exclusion on each property tax bill. That money's now gone. So for us to grant this refund, so to speak, will be coming out of district funds, and we've not, we've not ever done this as a board, and the reason it's under informational is we're not necessarily recommending that the board move forward to do that again. I think once that happens, you kind of open a can of worms for everybody that may lose their homestead farmstead exclusion by virtue of transferring. Solicitor General Carroll, if you have anything to add, or if there's any questions?
I think you summed it up accurately. So she could apply for this exemption again?
Yes. She got it. I think she missed it for 2014, so she'll not get it 2014, which is on the tax book going out in July, but she can apply and get it again for March of 2015.
Two other items under property and transportation were added. Should have been added to the agenda. Mr. Lake's building use for brush of honor for videotaping the show and also the presentation honor Sergeant Leslie Sabo. And also, today, just pretty much a Lincoln dishwasher has kind of seen its last days. I don't know if Mr. Schuster would add something to this, because he was over there working on it, met with the people that were looking at it, but it's in need of replacement, pretty much. I don't know, Steve, you want?
Well, the water temperature has to reach 1,800 degrees, and we're not reaching it because the pipes are all clogged.
180.
180.
180.
Jesus. Yeah, yeah. But we're not reaching it at all. We're not even coming close. And that's what started all the thing, and everything on it, the drains aren't holding water anymore. So because the drains aren't holding water anymore, we're getting water added to it that is not up to temperature, which is making it worse. The state has been in there a couple times. I'm sure Carl will tell you how many times, and we haven't been passing. Sooner or later, it's going to, it's going to start probably costing us money. I don't mean for the dishwasher, I mean for the fines, so we're not, because we're not faulting it at all.
Well, we'll probably have to try to get some of that cleaned down apart where the machine works properly. So it's going to be kind of a hassle to get it done, so that's why we have to get it fixed this week, because we don't want to pay fines, and we don't want to be sick.
And we don't want kids sick.
I'm not saying there will be fines, I'm just saying, I don't know what will happen, because we've never been in this situation, you know, so. But we're trying to move quickly. I, I'm looking at going multiple ways. One way is to bring the dishwasher from Hartman up and have it fabricated in and installed in there. The only trouble with that is that one's like 15 years old, which means there's no more warranties on it at all. So we went down yet this, this morning and ran it, this afternoon, and ran it to try to see if the gaskets and the seals were all okay. They seem to be okay. But a couple leaks, and I already called to get the parts, so we can get that. They'll be here tomorrow. So we'll get those leaks fixed, so we can check to make sure there's no more leaks. And then we're going to price the same unit brand-new, so we can see about warranties and see what, what kind of warranties we'll get with it. We might be able to buy a brand-new one for the price that it's going to cost us to move that one up there, you know? So I don't know how this is going to go. This is new to me, worrying about this whole thing, so I'm going to try to move quickly on it, but I want to move carefully also, because I want to spend money wisely.
Thank you. That's all I have. If I can add one more thing on the, on the agenda, the updated agenda. PSBA elections are coming up. PSBA has asked that each board cast, cast their vote for candidates. So I've given you a website. If you can take a look at those candidates for Thursday evening, we'll have a motion prepared and try to get that taken care of. They then give the board secretary the authority to go online and cast the board's vote. So they've actually made, they've endorsed certain candidates, and I'm not sure with those, I mean, that's, I don't know where you'll go with it, but I mean, they've endorsed them, so that being said, if you can take a look at that Thursday, we'll try to get that. Thank you. That's all we got.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mancini. Before we go to the visitors' portion, I'd like to take this time and welcome our new assistant principal to the administrative staff, and I hope you're settled in and everything's going well for you.
Yes, very pleased to see you. Thank you.
All right, we'll move over to our visitors. We'll start in front. State your name, please, and the reason why you're here tonight, one question you have. Welcome, just a visitor.
Hi, I'm Shannon McHyman, from McHyman's Photography. I've come to ask the board to help me resolve an issue regarding a football, the breach of contract I have with the football team. On Friday, July 18th, I received a text message from the football booster president, Damon Barrett, stating that he was advised by Mr. Lake to no longer use my services for the 2014 season. 2012, there was a three-year legal contract signed by the boosters and myself. And this contract, it stated that the football boosters will be using services for 2013, 14, and 15 football seasons. Because this contract was broken so close to the football seasons, McHyman's Photography has lost income and also the chance to bid on other photography jobs to cover the cost for this loss. The school board and all parties involved should have received the letter from my attorney postmark on August 12, 2014. Due to the lack of response from all parties, I was advised by my attorney to contact the school board to help me resolve this issue without pursuing legal action. I would like the school board to help me resolve this issue, and I would like payment from the football boosters for the loss of the income for the 2014 season. A resolution to the photography job for the 2015 season or payment for lost income for that year would also be appreciated. Copies of all of the above-mentioned items, letters, contract, and text message are available for each of them, and I made 11 copies for you.
I'd like to see that. We have to see it. Well, we thank you for your concern, and we're going to have to take some time to look this over, and we'll have a decision for you of which way we're going to go.
Okay. I was advised my attorney to say that she would like 30 days for response, or she's going to take it long. Thank you.
Next.
Captain Julie, here in recommend Zenfield City, PTO.
Carl Cromer, I was just making myself available questions on the matter with Steve Schuster and the dish machine, also for Mr. Mancini regarding seeing the hires that we're talking about.
Thank you. I think that that's all we have for visitors' portion. We're going to take some time here and go into our executive session for personnel matters. Appreciate you coming to the meeting tonight, and hopefully we'll see you on Thursday. Appreciate you coming to the meeting tonight, and hopefully we'll see you on Thursday.
Go over the cafeteria.